Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the February 24th meeting of the St. Mary's County Planning Commission. There are two sign up sheets in the foyer for our hearing this evening. One is the sign up sheet if you're speaking, the other is the sign up sheet for attendees of, for just the attendees of these hearings. In case any further information needs to be sent to you regarding the cases, please sign in on these sheets. Our meeting is being recorded for the public record. Any comments made by anyone present must be recorded as part of the record. Therefore, if you have anything to say, you must come up to one of the microphones provided. Your comments cannot be recorded and placed in the record unless they are directed to a microphone. You are to direct your statements, questions, or responses to the board only, and we will direct them to the appropriate person for an answer. Please keep your comments to three minutes or less. Anyone testifying or asking questions during our public hearings will be required to take the oath. Please speak close to the microphone, and please silence your cell phones at this time. Thank you for your cooperation. See, on our agenda this evening after the approval, or going over the minutes for the February 10th hearing, we have two public hearings this evening. First one is Zone 24-0040-20698. Tell I'm not good with these glasses either. For the zoning map and comprehensive plan amendment. Following that, we have CSP 24-0345 for the Cottage Apartments. After that, any new business, followed by adjournment. I'll let the board members introduce theirself.
Judy Phileas. Good evening. Lynn Delahaye.
Patty Rubrik. No, I'm sorry, I'm Joe Sinclair.
I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna tell you you did that too.
I ordered her because she's on vacation.
Howard Thompson.
Joe Van Kirk.
Jay Cousineau.
Connor Lockren.
Also with us from county staff this evening, don't see a hurry, the deputy director Courtney Jenkins is here, and our planner is Sean Lee Blasco, and our senior administrative coordinator is Betty Nickerson. Also from the county staff, our deputy county attorney, Mr. John Sterling Hauser, and the director of the Department of Public Works and Transportation, Mr. Jim Gotch, and our video media producers this evening are Amy Carter and Andrew Beckman. Okay. Let's see, did everybody get a chance to review the February 10th minutes?
Yes.
Was there any adjustments, corrections? Okay, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
A motion to approve. And a second. Mr. Lockren, all in favor that, say aye.
Aye.
And we, yes ma'am, thank you. Any opposed? Got to ask. Okay, moving right along. For our first case this evening, that will be for the Goddard property. Waiting for everything to pop up on the screen. The owner's Robert, and Robin, Robin Beden. Their agent this evening is Mr. Christopher Longmore, and the, um, let's get to this. Computers are a wonderful thing, except when you don't want them to work. Their request this evening is to change the land use designation to mixed use medium intensity, and the zoning designation to medium intensity mixed use. I'm gonna have to change these up. Sorry. Okay, there you go. Okay, anybody that will be speaking this evening or have questions or anything during that hearing, if you would stand at this time, and I'll get you sworn in. It's okay. Raise your right hand, and do declare and affirm under the penalty of perjury that the testimony, responses, and statements you may give will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Okay, thank y'all. And if during public commentary time, if there's anybody that comes up and I haven't sworn you in, I'll do so at that time. Hey Courtney.
All right. Good evening, Planning Commission members. Just to start real quick, a friendly reminder, for the comprehensive plan update, St. Mary's 2050, charting our tomorrow, we're still in community engagement window number one. We've completed our in-person and virtual visioning sessions, however, the online activity portion is still open and available until the end of the day on Monday, March 3rd. So I'm hopeful that most of you have completed, but it's not too late to still spread the word and let folks know if they go to the county's website, and then go to Public Agencies' Land Use and Growth Management, they can find our comp plan webpage there, and there's a button, participate now, so folks can still go through and complete the online visioning activities. And let me know if you have any questions about that. I will go ahead and pull up my PowerPoint presentation. Okay, so the Goddard property consists of 8.27 acres, and is owned by Robert and Robin Beldon. There is a 1,988 square foot manufactured home on the property currently. The applicant is seeking a comprehensive plan amendment to change the land use from rural preservation to mixed use medium intensity, and a zoning map amendment to change the rural preservation zoning district to the medium intensity mixed use zoning district. State law allows local jurisdictions to approve a change in zoning in one of two situations. One, there has been a substantial change in the character of the neighborhood, which renders the current zoning inappropriate. And number two, when the local legislative body has made a mistake when it rezoned the property to its current zoning designation. CZO Section 21.2.2A requires that prior to amending the zoning maps, the Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners shall each hold at least one public hearing on an application for an amendment to the official zoning maps. The site is located at 20698 Goddard Road in Great Mills. The applicant has identified the neighborhood as those properties adjacent and near Maryland Route 5 between Atkins Road and Holy Face Church, as well as those properties adjacent and near Great Mills Road from its intersection with Maryland Route 5 and its intersection with Chancellor's Run Road. The land use is rural preservation, and the zoning is rural preservation district. Per Page 4-24 and 4-25 of the comprehensive plan, the purpose of the rural preservation land use is to preserve open space and protect land and water resources, and to protect the land and water resource base that is necessary to maintain and support the preferred land uses of agriculture, forestry, fishery activities, and aquaculture. Growth should also be limited to preserve natural environments. The corresponding zoning to the rural preservation land use is rural preservation district. The regulations of the RPD are generally intended to foster agricultural, forestry, mineral resource extraction, and aquaculture uses, and protect the land base necessary to support these activities. The general intent of the district is to encourage farming without undue burden on the landowner. So per Page 4-24 of the comprehensive plan, the purpose of the mixed use medium intensity land use designation is to allow a broad range of uses adjacent to principal transportation corridors with ample connectivity for vehicles and pedestrians. Standards are intended to accommodate automobile oriented uses while creating a visually attractive environment. And the corresponding zoning to the mixed use medium intensity land use is medium intensity mixed use. The regulations for this district are to create large scale and clustered commercial and residential uses adjacent to existing or planned transportation corridors. The zoning district is part of the Lexington Park Development District Master Plan. However, as shown in the master plan and on the county's GIS map, the subject property lies just beyond the Lexington Park Development District boundary. If the Planning Commission, and subsequently the County Commissioners, determine that there has been a substantial change in the character of the neighborhood, they will need to also consider whether it warrants a change to the boundary of the Lexington Park Development District. The public notice for the Planning Commission public hearing was published in the Southern Maryland News on December 27th, 2024, and January 3rd, 2025. The property has been posted in accordance with CZO requirements, Section 21.3.3. Certified mail receipts have been received and have been entered into the record. The staff report was uploaded to Board Docs prior to the original January 13th public hearing date. And at this time, I will introduce Mr. Chris Longmore to present further information regarding the applicant's request. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions of staff at this time?
No, no wait.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Longmore.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. Thank you for your time this evening. Before I begin the presentation, there are a couple of other staff comments that, in working with staff today, I don't think were part of your agenda tonight or the staff report, so I'm gonna hand them up, and I have copies for you all. They include the Capitol Facility comments for a request, Department of Public Works, and an email from State Highway Administration that we're all either favorable or no comment, but so the record's complete, I'll hand them up. Give Courtney a copy. Next slide, please. So again, I'm here tonight happily representing Robert and Robin Beldon in their request tonight. I know that was before you a couple of weeks ago with a different zoning map amendment request, the process that we outlined there, I'll go over it again this evening for the benefit of the public and the commission members that are here. But in this case, we're asking to rezone their property that is own rural preservation district with a rural preservation land use, to be rezoned mixed intensity mixed use as the land use, an MXM zoning, the corresponding zoning, and that the property be added to the Lexington Park Development District. This property is right on the border of the district, the property immediately closer in to Lexington Park, to Great Mills Road is where Doyle's carpet has been, it's now the Great Mills Post Office that was recently changed and opened up within the last six to nine months. They're also renovating that to add some other uses to it at this time. So it's right on the edge of the Lexington Park Development District, it's a fairly large piece of property. And I'll probably ask Mr. Beldon to step up and just share with you generally kind of his thoughts that if this rezoning is granted, kind of what their hopes are and their plans are for it. Of course, any use, and I know the Planning Commission knows this, but for the benefit of any members of the public that are watching, any use or site plan or building permits, any of that, of course, would have to go through the normal process. This is simply asking for the rezoning tonight, but I thought the commission may have some questions about that, so Mr. Beldon can answer those if he do. If we go to the next slide, this is the aerial, the photo, you can see that with kind of the dot on the, the large piece of property there with the kind of turquoise circle around that dot, that's the property we're talking about. So the commission's aware that one of the properties immediately to the south of that or on the bottom side of that is also owned by the Beldons. Portion of the property fronts Maryland Route 5, which is that road right there, Point Lookout Road. Immediately across from Route 5 is an industrial zone property that has several industrial uses right on the corner of Great Mills Road and Route 5. That building to the upper left of the property, or immediately to the left of the property on Route 5, is the Great Mills Post Office now, with those other uses that are being added to it. And the whole stretch of the road on Route 5, north on Route 5 are all commercial uses in that area. So this, if we go to the next slide.
Before you go on, just the other dots that are there, that surround it, you know, the two on the, on Route 5, and at a larger, a smaller scale, there's other, looks like houses or people's homes along there, and I don't know, and this may come up, but, so people's homes are all along there, and they're, the desire is to develop, be able to develop that particular land. Do the other landowners have a problem with that?
I know they've received notice, I don't, I don't know if any are here this evening. Mr. Beldon can certainly speak to it, he knows all of his neighbors, and he's spoken with a lot of them, so I believe they're familiar with the requests, and they've received the notices. Of course, if it ever is developed, they will likewise receive all the required notice before any site plan submitted, and given that it is residential property, if the chosen use of the Beldons is any type of commercial or non-residential property, all the setbacks and buffer yards would apply to any development they do there, so.
Is this the first public hearing for this piece of property?
It is, for this request, this is the first hearing. We had, the application went into the county in January of last year, so it's been in process for about a year. You can see a lot of the agency comments were part of the staff report, and then we handed out some of the other ones, we've been working with county staff over the last year, so we can be here before you tonight. If we go to the next slide, this shows the current zoning in the areas, again, the subject property is in the center, you know, on the bottom of that piece of property. Again, you can see immediately adjacent on Route 5 is a stretch of property zoned MXM, likewise across Route 5, up to the left is all MXM. That gray area is existing industrial. Across the street, there is RL, residential low density, which I believe is five, that has a fairly substantial density allowed for residential development, that is an existing housing development, as I'm sure the Planning Commission remembers, those blue dots are some approved townhouses immediately across the street, they came back before you not too long ago for reapproval. So that, that shows the current zoning in the area.
Chris?
Yes.
Quick question. Across the street where the gray industrial area is, where does the Lexington Park Development District end? There.
So the, I guess the easiest way to do this, and I do have, there's a PDF that kind of shows the actual district off of the GIS map, but looking at this map, essentially everything that is not RPD there, here, yeah, this'll, this'll work, thank you, Courtney. All of that area that's in like the shaded yellowish color there is all the Lexington Park Development District. So you can see everything on the other side of Route 5 is, I think all the way down to Willow's Road, I think is probably the border all the way down Route 5 there as part of the, the development district, or a good portion of it if it doesn't go all the way down there. And then you can see everything on the left side, or to the left of this property along Route 5, it's all part of the development district. The pie wedge right when you go on Indian Bridge Road is not there on the left, although the corner of it is there, and then there's some other properties to go a little further north that are still part of it.
Was this land ever part of the Lexington Park Development District? Because I did read that at one point in time, the county, I think the word was de-zoned, and, and shrunk the, the district.
I don't believe this was part of that. I believe that was another part of there, staff may know otherwise, but I don't believe this property was ever part of it or taken out of it, either one, I think this is the first. Not that I could find in the records. Thanks, Courtney.
Sure thing.
So if we go to the next slide, this just shows the current land uses, and as I know the Planning Commission is aware, we have the land use map that's part of the comprehensive plans, the county plan and the Lexington Park Development District plan both have their own. And then there's the zoning maps, they have to be consistent, so that's why we're asking that the underlying land use map be changed, similar to the other zoning map amendment or request that you've seen. So if we go to the next slide. So this is the amendment process. The zoning ordinance provides for individuals to be able to apply to, for rezoning. There are certain requirements that we believe we can meet in this case. Where we're at is in bold there, and underlined, as I mentioned, we had submitted our application to land use back in January of 2024. We've worked with the planning director and the agencies and staff, had multiple meetings with them about the application, and we're here before you this evening. We're asking the Planning Commission to submit a recommendation to Board of County Commissioners, we're asking for a favorable recommendation. In any event, their recommend, your recommendation will go to the Board of County Commissioners, and will be scheduled for a public hearing, I believe, within 60 days of your, of your recommendation to them. They will hold a second public hearing, and then they will ultimately be the ones that decide whether this rezoning is approved or not, and the land use map changes are approved. If we go to the next slide. This is again, just the excerpt from the zoning ordinance, again, for benefit of the public and the Planning Commission, that you do consider this application once it's applied for, and that within 60 days, other recommendations get transmitted to the County Commissioners. If we go to the next slide. So the standards, as I believe Ms. Jenkins had mentioned, there are two ways that the county can rezone a property based on the application of the landowner. One is a mistake in the original zoning of the property, the other is a substantial change in the character of the neighborhood. In this case, we are presenting it as a substantial change case, not a mistake in the original zoning. I know the staff report said we reserve the right to, to present that to you tonight. In reviewing the staff report and the information we've gathered since we've applied, we believe we can show substantial change in the character of the neighborhood. We do not have evidence of any mistake in the original zoning, so we're not asking for that. There is a section in the land use article, the Maryland Annotated Code, that also addresses zoning map changes. That's Section 4-204, Ms. Jenkins had mentioned it in her report, and I'll go over the elements of that as we get toward the end of our presentation this evening. If we go to the next slide. So this is the, there is no, as, as you may recall from the last hearing, there is no set definition for where the neighborhood is when we come in and ask for one of these. This is what we propose as the neighborhood to be considered, and really, the lines aren't exact, but it's the properties immediately adjacent and near Route 5 and Great Mills Road. We chose the area from Chancellor's to the end of Route 5, and then up to Atkins Road, which is roughly where that residential high density ends up there. And then further up, as you can see, up to Indian Bridge Road. And I had mentioned before that the Lexington Park Development District goes further up Route 5, you can see that here, all those properties zoned MXM are in the Lexington Park Development District, as are the gray industrial and the other properties further to the north of, of Route 5. So that's the, the neighborhood that we're suggesting be used in your analysis this evening. If we go to the next slide. So this property is located in an area immediately adjacent to Lexington Park, near the intersection of Route 5 and Route 246, which people know as Point Lookout Road and Great Mills Road. We talked about our suggestion of the neighborhood. Our property was last considered as part of a comprehensive planning in 2010, when the last county comprehensive plan was done. The Lexington Park Development District plan was actually, believe it, I couldn't believe this when I looked at, was adopted in 2016, almost nine years ago. So that, that plan likewise has some age to it. There were zoning map amendments and stuff that occurred through 2019, but the plan itself was adopted some time ago that set the boundaries. If you look at some of the examples of the development that has occurred in this neighborhood, there's the J.F. Taylor Building on Great Mills Road, which I think is a great addition to that, I was before you when they were applying for that project. There's also the post office, which we think has really changed some of the traffic flow and some of the uses, it's pulled it up from, many of you may know this, but so the public knows, it used to be further north on Route 5, on the right-hand side of Route 5. They moved it further back on that. Being someone that uses that post office, it's a lot easier to get in and out of, it's not as congested of an area there where it is. It will bring some more traffic to this part of the, the area and adjacent to my client's property, so we think that's something to be considered. Maryland Route 5 and Route 246 are one of the state highway projects that was underway before the funding got put on hold for a while. The staff report mentions this, the funding for that project is on hold and is now slated for 2099, I believe, in the state highway projects. As I understand it, and I know Mr. Gotch is here, and he may know a lot more detail than I, but many of the, almost all of the projects got put to that date because there's no funding to fund a lot of the projects in the state. That is not the intended actual date as I understand it, and the understanding that, that I've obtained from talking to folks at the county, is that the plan is, once funding is available, they're gonna try to go back to the priorities that were already in process. I can share with the Planning Commission that there has been a great deal of work on that project in the design, I've seen the designs of it. There's also been property acquisition by the state of Maryland, I've had several clients that had some of their property taken, so that the road can be expanded, the bridge can be improved, right there next to the Sheets Convenience Store and across from Great Mills Trading Post. So there, and they've done some of the utility work already, there's new poles that have gone up very recently. So there is work that is being done, it's certainly in the plans, and it's been a priority for the county for traffic and other reasons to improve that area. So we believe that that's something that will get done, and hopefully the, the Planning Commission will consider as a change in this neighborhood. The YMCA is, they've done some of the grading and clearing, I've noticed in the last week or so, that's not far from this, so that's another development within this neighborhood. There's the redevelopment of the property formerly known as Friendly Tavern there that has some nice looking businesses there. And then the Blazers Building has been redone, and now the Great Mills Trading Post is closer into that area. So there's been a lot in this area redone. I think most or all of those have been done, knowing that that roadwork was gonna be done in this area, so it really is kind of cleaning it up, and that'll alleviate some of the traffic. Even though that's on hold, any development of this property, of course, would be years out, because we'd have to go through this process and then go through the concept site plan process, the final site plan process. So on behalf of my clients, we're hoping this is a very good time to be in here to kind of have our homework done now and ask for this rezoning now, so they can begin that process, and those can hopefully operate together in time, so that those improvements will be done in that area. So if we go to the next slide. This is, that you can see here, and this is as conceptual as, as it could kind of be at this point. My clients certainly want to see how this request goes, but you can see their property in the bottom right-hand corner there. Again, their plan is to do kind of a combination office manufacturing facility. Mr. Beldon or, or Ms. Beldon can happily share their, their thoughts with you about kind of what their plans are. This certainly is not final, it's not their request before you tonight. It's similar, I think, to the design or the purpose of that J.F. Taylor facility, that's similar to have some office use and some manufacturing to be able to be done there. Of course, I know a, a strong desire of our county is to support the tech industry, both in support of the Navy Base and otherwise here, we think that this would be a good fit and a good area for that type of use. And certainly with all the folks going back onto the base recently, we're gonna need some more space off the base again. It was overcrowded before folks came off, and if this lasts, we're certainly gonna need this type of facility more so than before. So that's kind of the thought of the, of their plans right now. Of course, again, any plans would have to be more fully developed, engineered, and come back before you. So we're not asking you to approve this tonight, just to make that clear to the audience and to the Planning Commission, but we thought you all may have some questions about why my clients are coming in, and this is kind of their, their thoughts of what their initial thoughts are to use the property for. We think it'd be a nice complementary use on the large property right on the edge of the district right now, right next to the other commercial uses in the post office right next door, we think it would work well together. If we go to the next slide. The criteria we need to meet, and this is that state statute that I mentioned, that we have to meet these six criteria in order for the Board of County Commissioners to ultimately approve this project. I'll submit copies of this for the record, I presented to you two weeks ago at the other hearing. The first is whether there's been a population change since 2010, when the last plan was done. There's been approximately a 9% increase in the population of St. Mary's County. I'll submit copies of this to Ms. Jenkins, and I have a couple extra copies if you'd like to see it. The census has our population in 2023, so that's the last numbers that are online, that have been posted at 115,281. And then in 2010, it was about 105,772, so if I did my math right, that's about a 9% increase. So if I did my math right, that's about a nine percent increase. So I'll present copies of those, of the data to back that up to Ms. Jenkins, just so that is in the record. Those are just pronounced from their website. So we believe we can show that there's been a population change. The availability of public facilities, this is right near the intersection of two of our main, two significant roads, two major roads in the county. The agency comments that are both part of the staff report and the few that I shared with you. There are no objections from any of the agencies that reviewed this. They were either no comments or, or comments that said they were either approving it or, or had no objections to it. The Maryland Department of Planning also reviewed it. I know that you all have seen that in the staff report. There were no objections to it. There were considerations to take into effect, things that my clients would have to consider, like getting the water sewer changed, the categories changed if they went forward. Of course, those would be steps in the future if they chose to develop it when they do so. So we believe that the public facilities are available there. There's no objections from MECOM or the Health Department, Department of Public Works or State Highway there. The present and future transportation patterns, we've touched on a little bit. I presented to you the Department of Public Works and State Highway, no objection letters that you have. And again, there are the planned road improvements there that were in process and, and hopefully just put on hold for a year or two now and will get back underway to alleviate some of the traffic that's there. That'll open up this area quite a bit. The property is also located in a nice location near Patuxent River Naval Air Station and Webster Field, kind of in between there. So it's a nice location to support either of those facilities. That it's compatible with existing and proposed development in the area. Again, we have the industrial uses right across the street. We have the new uses next door, the post office. There is the J F Taylor Building, the Great Mills Trading Post. There's a V, if you look at the neighborhood up to Chancellor's Run Road, there's also the new VA Medical Center that's been built across from Great Mills High School. There's seven eleven up there on the corner. The whole area has been being redeveloped since two thousand and ten. So we think this would be a nice addition to it. And the property immediately next door is the exact zone we're asking to be changed. We're not asking for a different zoning than the area. We'd be the same as the one immediately adjacent to us to the north. The fifth item is a recommendation to the planning commission. That's what we're asking for from you this evening. The board of county commissioners will certainly consider your thoughts. And then the relationship of this proposed amendment to the local jurisdictions plan. I think the, the Maryland Department of Planning talked about how the county could consider this, whether they wanted it in the development district. There weren't a lot of objections to it. It's a fairly large piece of property immediately adjacent to the development district. So we're not asking to develop out in, in a remote rural part of the county. So we believe that this, certainly if it was included in the Lexington Park Development District Plan, which is what we're going to be asking the county commissioners to include in our request. And we're asking you to recommend that. We believe that it would be well within that plan and promote all the uses, a lot of job opportunities that would be there. It's not a high intense plan that my clients intend to use it for. And certainly the planning commission would have their say in approval of any uses on it. But we believe it would fit in very nicely with our economy here in the right location, right at a significant intersection of two of the major roads in the county. So we believe that it does fit in with that plan. So if we go to the, I think, the last slide or the second to last slide. So again, the character of the neighborhood since two thousand and ten, when the last comprehensive plan was done and even since two thousand and sixteen, when the Lexington Park Development District is done, we believe has substantially changed in this area. The commercial development and the planned additional residential development across the street, along with the road improvements that are planned, it's immediately adjacent to the development district already. And we believe it would be a perfect location for business use that complements other businesses and, and the naval station. So if we go to the last slide. So our requests this evening are that the planning commission submit a recommendation to the board of county commissioners to rezone the property from R P D to MXM and that you likewise recommend an amendment to the county land use map to redesignate it to a mixed use, medium intensity use and to include it in the Lexington Park Development District boundaries. And that's our presentation this evening. Mr. and Mrs. Belton are here for any questions you have for them as well. They've been sworn in and they wanted to be available for any questions you had as well.
Anybody have any questions with the applicant?
Maybe just a comment. Given its proximity to the Lexington Park Development District, it makes, it's reasonable to be asking for a change like this. The own, the one concern that I have, and I know the plan, I don't know. When I saw the twenty ninety-nine date, I thought if that's a date, real date, then it's never going to happen. And that area is horrible. I mean, I, I live in Great Mills. I have to come through there. If you come Great Mills Road, Chancellor's Run, you know, Indian Bridge, any of those, you're stuck. And so adding more traffic to that area would be a concern. So if, since this is not immediate, if we could see, get the state or whatever to kind of put that as a priority or you sit at the five-minute light at Indian Bridge Road and takes you twenty-five minutes to get through that intersection. So that needs to be a priority. And in the virtuals and in the sessions that we've had with the commission, I mean, sorry, with the comprehensive plan, we had, we used a map that said, you know, what areas need to change. And about, about, I think everyone in that meeting at the, when we met at the library had dots on that particular section saying, this has got to change. So that would be my only thing from a timing perspective, is that that's got to be done.
And certainly, you know, I know you're aware of this and, and all the members are. Any application to development will be subject to all the adequate public facilities. If there's problems with traffic, my clients will need to address it. We're hoping that that project will move forward and ease that there. And that's why it'd be a great location for something like this, we think. I mean, I live in the same area. I go through that intersection every, every evening. It's gotten a little more crowded since folks went back on base. So yeah, that, that's our hope, that the timing might actually work out really well now, even though it's on hold. Our, our hope and our understanding is that since there has been quite a bit of investment in the project already. I mean, I know I represented several of the landowners along Route five that had property taken by the state, you know, through eminent domain, that had to work with them to get compensation for it. So I believe all of that's been done or the vast majority of it has. So it's really, and it's been designed. They've also done some demolition of, of properties that are on there, like the state did one of the houses there, I know, because we worked with them on it. So there has been, it's more than just a, a hope. You know, there has been some work done on it, so we're hoping it'll go forward.
And the neighbors are A-OK with this?
Well, and Mr. Belton can speak to any conversations he've had, he's had certainly. It's, as I understand it, and Robin, you can correct me if I'm wrong, it's, it's her family. It's been in her family for a long time, the property. They know the folks in the area that are there. They want to be respectful of them and any development they do down the road. And that would, of course, all have to come before you and they'd want to work with them to make sure it's compatible, you know, with everybody around them.
Some of my observations on this, piggyback off of Ms. Philly is, is the property is close to the Lexington Park Development District. It's, you know, got the development across the road. Mr. Doyle's had his store and all that. But I'll say a concern, it's not a problem, but I don't have a problem with the change this evening with the zoning and such. But when it comes time for the development, there'll be a couple of things. Of course, the road, I mean, everybody knows about the road and they've already started with the infrastructure of that. And then, you know, got the rug pulled out from underneath them. So we're all waiting, everybody's waiting for that. My concern would be where they would want to develop on this piece of property as far as, you know, if they do a, and we'll just use the Taylor Building, you know, up the street as, you know, nice looking building. You know, the, I remember the neighbors there were very concerned about what was going to be in their neighborhood when they had. And it turned out, you know, really nice, it's a nice looking building. But we have one neighbor that's, that's up in there and they, they're right up in the, in the corner. I'll say we're right, road frontage wise, and I believe that's the Quades. On the one picture that y'all had of, I'll say a concept of what they might want to do on that, I would want to protect those neighbors because they're, it's still residential. So this isn't for tonight. This is just something, a seed plant that if this happens to move forward, that, uh, they need to, you know how I am with neighbors. You know how I am with neighbors. And, and, and in that time, buffers and, and, you know, I wouldn't want them to come in and ask for a variance for, for a reduced buffer because if I'm still sitting here, hopefully I might still be here when that happens. And some of these board members will be. Always need to protect those residential neighbors that, that are right up against that. And it's going to be more or less just like the, the folks up there by the J F Taylor Building. They were very concerned about it. And then it turned out, you know, fairly well, this is a little bit different. I'll say these houses are right there beside and, and, you know, it's in the corner. And when they showed the other building that they might, it was, it was kind of close to, to, to the Quades property line. So in the future, when, when you do that, you know, consider, consider the neighbors. Things will work much better if it, if it takes care of both y'all and your neighbors next door when it comes. But it is close. You know, hopefully our, our state government will get this highway situation and, and get some money back in the bank and get that road fixed because it, it is, it's needed. Yeah, I mean, we have Navy Base, we have another base, we have a lot of, a lot of development around there. So that road is really, I think it's, it's up there on the A-list. It's just getting the money to finish it up. So I just want to throw in my two cents on that, that, you know, I don't have a lot of problem with what we're going to do. What, what is being asked of us tonight, I'm just speaking for myself on this. But my concern would be further down the road, you know. Now that they've heard it, maybe they can do any type of adjusting to, to make sure. Always take care of your neighbors next door.
I've got some concerns. I understand that the neighborhood is a term, kind of like when you compare a farm. There's no real definition of a farm. It can be five acres or five hundred acres. Same as a neighborhood. And I know there's been some redevelopment around there. And I will give you the fact that the Taylor Building was new, but most of the other stuff, though. I mean, uh, Doyle's Carpet is the post office, Friendly's is a few things. You know, it's been a lot of redevelopment, but I don't know if that, in my mind, meets a substantial change in the neighborhood. So I wanted to throw that out there. And my other issue with this is we've probably had, this is my tenth year here. We've probably had fifty hearings or more that have been development within the development district, Lexington Park Development District. Ninety-nine percent of the people that spoke were in opposition to someone developing the Taylor Building or, or whatever else because it's near their home. So now to expand the development district, it just seems like it's, it's going against what most of the county that have came in here to oppose things have said. And piggybacking on that, what, what I think this does, nothing against the Beltons in, in my mind, but I don't know how we would limit this in the future. Now, I mean, I'm not saying that the county would want to limit it, but to me, every property on every border around the Lexington Park Development District Plan would have the same right to come in here and say, hey, we, we would like to do this. We want to just, we want to expand. We want to be, have our property upzoned and be part of the, the district or whatever. It just, it seemed like we would be setting a precedence that is outside of the normal. What we've done since I've been here is we have corrected some dual-zoned properties. As we were here last time, there was a dual-zone property where half of its one, you know, half of it's one thing, half of it's something else. That's not really the case here, in, in my mind. Also, part of the, part of the statute that Ms. Jenkins read talks about access for MX, MXX or MXM is usually off of a approved corridor road or, or main thoroughfare. And that's, maybe that's why this was left out all, all them times because it's off a Goddard Road. I mean, it's got a little bit of property, it looks like, off of.
It fronts Route five.
It fronts Route five, but it's not the access.
Right. I mean, it, yeah, depending on how it's developed, I guess, is how, but you, but you're right.
But even your, your pre-concept plan does not show access coming off Route five.
Right. And again, that's, that's very schematic, you know, there's been.
Sure, but I'm, I'm just saying it's not, at this point, it, it, it doesn't have that. And just a couple more points that I want to make. If you read the analysis on page three of what the county proposed, in my mind, I don't think any of the three or four paragraphs support this. Doesn't say that, but the way I read some of this stuff, you know, paragraph two, it says, it's unclear as to how item two factors into the analysis. Because the proximity of MXM and industrial zone property may not change the character of the neighborhood. Instead, it's the actual development of the property that might lead to the conclusion there's been significant changes. But we can't use their property that hasn't been developed yet to say there's a substantial change. To me, and if you read further, it does talk about the transportation plan and it talks about the utility design funding, which was pushed to twenty twenty-five, which is subject to change. And it gives you another however, that when the construction of these projects, doesn't just say one or, it says, but these, talking about the road improvements and the utility plan, then they may support a conclusion that there's been substantial change in the character of the neighborhood. I don't know, when I read that, I don't see, I don't read that as a positive comment. Maybe it's just the way I'm looking at it. But in my mind, a couple of issues that I have is where does expanding stop? You know, every property that surrounds the development district could say, hey, there's some kind of, there's been some sort of redevelopment that touches near them. So that's where I, where I stand with this, plus, like I say, of, of all the, all the hundreds and hundreds of people that have opposed things in the developmental district. And, and I'm sure mostly all of them got approved, but to be adding something that's outside of what it, what it was, I, in my mind, is not the right fit for this. So that's, that's, I think that's all I had, had written down. I, I get stuck on the substantial change and I think we'd be setting the precedence of, of this kind of stuff. So that's just.
And certainly we can, we can respect your views. I mean, a, a couple of things just to mention, and, you know, I know you've been on the planning commission a long time. I've been, been at these hearings a long time, you know, seeing you almost every, twice a month. I, I think a lot of the people that do come before you are the ones that have concerns with projects, not the ones that either think it would be a good idea or they like it once it's developed. You know, it's folks that are in the area that, and they have every right to be here. I think, you know, that I make every effort when I'm here representing a client to respect those views, address them and kind of respond to them and, and listen to them, you know, in a sincere way. The four points that were in the staff report were taken from the letter that I submitted. We didn't submit a list of four things and say, these four things supported. They were all in our letter, but we didn't have them in like an itemized list like that. I think the points that we were trying to make kind of dovetails on what you were talking about, Mr. Van Kirk, is that there is a question where the development district should start or end. If you look at the development district map we showed you, they're not straight lines. There were judgment calls made all along to where that is. You can look at it, it goes part of the way up Route five, it's part of the corner, it wraps around. There have been judgment calls made all along. We just ask that you look at this property and see if you think that with the size of it and it being located right next to a property that we think will get more use now with a, a public use like a post office, whether this property would be appropriate for inclusion in it. Certainly it could open the door and everybody can come in and ask for it. Those would be decisions for a later time. We're just asking that this one might be an appropriate one. That's all we're asking for tonight.
My, just a comment, my thoughts are that our comprehensive plan is old. It's, what is it, twenty twenty? And so it's fifteen, you know, rough twenty-ten. Okay, so it's quite old. And I know it's in the process of being updated. And so I would be thinking that all of these, I mean, not just this one, but the one that we had two weeks ago, is that looking, and from the, the one session that I attended, I think there was recognition that this area is growing and expanding. And so we may need to relook at all of those boundaries to address the change that's coming. And that, our new plan, what is the target date for that? Twenty?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-twenty-seven?
No, uh, winter of.
Um, no, uh, winter of 2025, early 2026.
Okay, I think we're going to get a brief on that soon. So that's, that's my thought on these, expanding these areas and expanding these district, the districts. I would think that at some point, we would, that's going to happen, whether we like it or not. My big thing is if the neighbors don't have a problem with it and the traffic patterns could be addressed.
And this, you know, and I mentioned it just so the planning commission's aware, the, with the plan having some age on it, you know, 2010 was a while ago. My clients did apply for this over a year ago when it was uncertain what was going on with the comprehensive plan. The processing took a lot longer than they expected, so it's been a year in process. These applications are very expensive for applicants to apply, so they have to make that decision. And I've been here with the planning commission a few years ago when the plan was first starting to be looked at again and it kind of got put on hold for a while. So by no means was was my client that's before you tonight trying to jump the comprehensive plan process. They applied for it before it was really back underway. It's just taken this long to get, get here before you tonight. So we'd ask that you consider that.
Ask a question, Mr. Longmore. Back when we were doing the comprehensive plan, it also changed some of the zoning district boundaries and and all. In doing the comprehensive plan, why wouldn't your client come on board and let it become part of the comprehensive plan? And then that way, he wouldn't have had to go on through the public hearing. It could have been adopted and changed and put into that category at that time, or am I wrong?
No, I I I understand your point, and I probably wasn't being as articulate as as I meant to be. I I've had clients coming in to me in 2003 asking, when is the comprehensive plan going to change? We've been waiting, you know, it's been a while, when is it going to? And I couldn't give them an answer. So that's when this application was put together, submitted in early January, after talking to staff before we submitted it. So it was not knowing when that plan will be. We hope that it goes along the timeline that's anticipated right now. We started this comprehensive plan, I think, three or four years ago. I remember being here one night when I think we got through the first three pages of the, of the then draft plan. And then it got put on hold again. So it's, it's hard when people own property and and want to have some sense of when a possible change could occur and not knowing. And that's where we were a year and a half ago, really, when we were starting to put this application together. So they've expended the time and resources to be here tonight. We think it's a good idea. So that's why we're asking that it, that we be able to go through the process. That again, that it's taken us over a year to even get before you, since we submitted that $3,000 plus application back in January of last year, not this year, last year.
Joe, I had a question for you. Did you mean the comprehensive plan or when we redid the Lexington Park Developmental District a few years ago?
Right, at that time, if it was considered to be, if it has made a significant change, it could be adopted and.
I think that's what he meant, Mr. Longmore.
Well, that was 2016, so that's been almost nine years ago now.
No, no, it was just a few years ago, wasn't it?
The plan itself was 2016. The ma, the zoning maps that followed it took a few years to get adopted till 2019 is when that did. I went and looked at the dates today off of.
2016 was my first year. We did not redo the Lexington Park Development District Plan in 2016.
I I thought that was the date on on what I saw online. Now, they, I think they updated in 2018 again because there was some errors.
We had a look at every single property.
All over again.
Been there, some things changed, some, you know, some people wanted it to stay the same. Up by the airport, I remember, down that one road, they changed, they wanted to stay residential instead of industrial or something. It was, it was all looked at, it was definitely not nine years ago, when we did that part of it anyway.
Right, that part, the the following steps definitely lasted through 2019 is when, is when the county commissioners adopted the ordinance that adopted the new zoning categories. But the plan itself started in 2015, I think, 2016 is when, is when that started. So to to get in line, you had to go back almost 10 years ago unless you jumped in in the middle. Now, my folks didn't own their property then, so so they acquired it fairly recently. And a lot of the changes that we talked about, like J F Taylor, like the post office, like the road improvements have been since that time. So there are the things that, and I know you may disagree or not think they're significant enough. We certainly respectfully think they are, and those have happened since 2019, that that all of that development has happened.
One more question. On the property, you can tell me because I really don't know. If that's R P D and it's taxed R P D, and he's getting ready to move it into a higher tax bracket, not knowing what's going to go there. As a business person, I would look at it and go, I'd leave it R P D until the time came. If there has been that mistake and if the boundary lines move versus paying that increase in in property tax. So I guess that leads to the question is, is there something already planned to go there?
Well, the sketch we shared, they do intend to use the property, that's why they're going through this process. This takes a long time. This is the first step of many for them to be able to achieve their goal if they're able to. So that, you're right, they could just sit around and wait and and go through the planning process. When, when they started this, they weren't sure when that would take place because it hadn't, it hadn't really, the calendar hadn't been put out there yet when they started applying for this. So you're right, there would be, my experience is when you have commercial property, it can be reassessed to be commercial tax wise. So so they're running that risk by asking for this tonight. And I think that shows their sincerity that they plan to use it for, you know, similar use.
I just, I just.
They're not planning to reschedule and sit on it, doesn't make sense. You know, their plan is to move forward with it.
I mean, I appreciate all the tax money coming into the county to help with roads and everything. We do appreciate that very much.
The Lexington Park Development District, Master, was done in 2016.
It was 2016.
Confirmation on that.
Yeah, I I thought it was, I I looked it up tonight, I.
Above.
But I might have, uh. He gets, he gets those epiphanies every so often.
You know, while, while we're.
Through eighteen T.
We're, we're really here tonight.
Yeah.
For is to adjust this boundary line.
Just this one, that's it.
We're getting off down into the weeds here and letting the comprehensive plan kind of overshadow our thought process. And I appreciate the questions and the concerns. Obviously, they've given a lot of thought to this. I mean, they didn't just come here last week and make application. It's been, they've been working on this for a couple of years before the comprehensive plan ever got into. So let's not hold them hostage to that for today. I I like the fact that you gave some thought into what you'd use it for. At least they didn't come for us and ask for 150 town unit housing development with one car parking lot for each place. You know, so it sounds like you've given it some thought and you're going to use it for maybe office or or was it retail?
Manufacturing, small manufacturing thing.
I mean.
That's a future.
I think that's.
Oh, we're getting into the weeds now, you're asking. I I'm just curious as to, because, I mean, that's what we do, we plan, we try to plan, we try not to be.
But they still have to come forth again.
Yeah.
So.
And we've given them a good idea how we lean, so that's, that's.
You, you answered all my questions.
Can't beat that horse with so much.
Do you have anything?
If the applicant would like to speak, I mean, you don't have to, but.
I'd be happy to address any questions.
I didn't know if you wanted to add anything you wanted to say or talk about.
You can, you can sit down at the chair, just give us your name and address. Mr. Beldon, can you give us your name and address, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, Robert Beldon, 45640 Hillview Farm Lane, and that's in Valley Lee. I mainly just to address your concerns, these are our neighbors, and we're very familiar with them. We, our house is right next to this property. So, you know, we've lived there for 25 years. We know the neighbors, we know the, the, the road. And to, Mr. Van Kirk's, I I guess, assumption that this road, this has direct access to five. If you looked at that drawing that they put up there, you'll see that the entrance to Goddard Road also is the entrance to the existing driveway to this area. I mean, we currently use it for accessing it with, you know, tractors and things like that. This is a hay field right now. So our plan is to essentially take this property. We are D O D services contractor, like many other in around here, and to do something very similar to what J F Taylor has. We're going to be doing some office space, some light manufacturing, some maintenance for D O D contracts, things like that. This isn't a high use retailer, it's not going to be a ton of traffic, honestly. You know, if 40 people come to work, there'll be 40 cars. So this isn't going to be, you know, a huge burden. And I'll, Ms. Judith over there, I'll address her concerns about that. We've lived there a long time. You try to make a left out of Goddard Road and it's going to take you 15 minutes to get to the traffic light. Nothing we do or say is going to affect that, whether I build, you know, a a house or a building there. Until the state comes along and addresses these concerns in Great Mills, you know, nothing I do or say is going to make a difference. So again, we're not looking to build high density residential, nothing like that. This is strictly going to be, so we don't have to rent office space anymore. Right now, we rent a very expensive office over in Wildwood. I would love to not pay that money to someone else. So it's strictly, this is an investment for our company and our family.
And you also, right straight across the road, the Millicent family has more or less a little bit more than what you you're going to have. But they have, I'll say, a J F Taylor type setting where they have three buildings that they do.
Sure.
It's, it's not a big impact, you wouldn't know what's going on, you know, because they've done it right, they've, they've, I'll say.
Ours will be the same.
Buffered it around. As long as you take care of your neighbors, I'm happy to camp.
That's not a problem.
Anybody else have anything? Chris, you have anything else?
No, no, we don't. Thank you very much.
All right, well, this time we'll open it up to public testimony if there was anybody. I don't have anybody on the sign in sheets, but if there's anybody that has questions or statements about this, this time, you can come up. Okay, nobody wants to come up, so we'll go ahead and close it. Won't be any rebuttal. So we'll just open it to the board for their deliberations. I think we've pretty much deliberated it as we've gone along.
I think so.
In in this board member's opinion, it's close enough to where everything else is. We've got a lot of houses across the road, a little ways up, so it's, it's, they have more going on across the road than what you will. This is next to the post office. Mr. Doyle has another piece of property, I'll say, south or west or whatever that may be, adjoining his, that might, something might happen in there. As far as changing for you, what you are asking for tonight, I don't have any problem with that. And if and when you decide you're going to do something with it, well, we'll grill you real good when that, when that comes before us.
This is my first time in this room.
Well, I mean, we, a lot of people know, there's a lot of people on this board, we, we, we tend to to look out for neighbors. You know, it's, it's a big thing. If you're going to do something that's a little bit different in the neighborhood, well, then, you know, we're going to make sure that everybody mixes in and everybody's taken care of, so. Anybody else have any?
That's what we call getting down into weeds.
Getting in the weeds, okay.
Sometimes you got to get down there.
I want to know, or I go fishing a lot to find out what's coming. I don't want to have somebody else catch me in a supermarket and go, you allowed that to come? I like to, well, you, and you did, you just told me everything that I wanted to know about why you wanted to be there in my little fishing expedition, that worked out just fine.
All right, well, if.
And I appreciate that answer that he gave.
Thank you.
Well, if there's no other discussion, if somebody, I, I think I, I see the way the board is leaning, if somebody would like to make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
In matter of Zone 24-0040 Beldon Property Zoning Map Amendment, having accepted the staff report and having made a finding that the criteria of C Z O 21.2.2. A in the Annotated Code of Maryland 4-204 have been met, I move that the planning commission recommend the application be approved by the county commissioners of St. Mary's County.
I'm going to give it to Mr. Lockren tonight, okay? You got to break him in, Joe. So I have a motion by Ms. Delahaye and a second by Mr. Lockren. Okay, we'll do this roll call, Ms. Delahaye?
Aye.
Ms. Phileas?
Aye.
Mr. Lockren?
Aye.
Mr. Cousineau?
No.
Van Kirk?
No.
Okay, Mr. Sinclair?
Aye.
And I'll also vote aye. Thank you for coming before us, we'll be looking forward to seeing you in the future.
Thank you for your time tonight.
Mr. Delahaye, thank you.
Good evening.
Thank you. Okay.
That's the one thing that I had a question.
Okay. We're back in session. Our next hearing this evening. Just had it lost.
You helped me and got yourself off.
Okay. Uh, our next project this evening is CSP two-four dash oh-three-four-five. Uh, it's the Cottage Apartments, six-unit apartment building. Uh, their agent this evening is Little Silence Rest, Mr. Burrows. And the summary of their request is an approval of a concept site plan for six units within one building. Um, multifamily dwelling, multifamily residence, a use type number sixteen, which is permitted use type within the TMX zoning district. Let's see, Mr. Burrows, you want to come ahead up? Get you seated up here and then we'll get staff here and I'll get everybody. Oh, Mr. Hunt. We got Mr. Hunt here tonight.
We got the big guy with us tonight. That's nice.
Okay, while I got everybody and got you all standing and everything, uh, anybody that has any statements, I know I have a couple of people that are, are wanting to speak in a little bit. Uh, I'll get everybody sworn in. Yeah, anybody that might be making a statement, uh, tonight, if you'd stand at this time, raise your right hand and do you declare and affirm under the penalty of perjury? Okay, do you declare and affirm under the penalty of perjury that the testimony, responses, and statements you may give will be the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank y'all. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Sean Lee?
Good evening. Agenda item two is the concept site plan, CSP twenty-four dash zero-three-four-five, The Cottage Apartments. The applicants seek approval of a concept site plan for a six-unit apartment development. The site is located at twenty-eight zero-five-five Three Notch Road in Mechanicsville. The comprehensive plan area is growth area. Land use area is mixed-use medium intensity. And the zoning is TMX. Town centers are secondary grow- growth centers, urban in pattern, moderately intense residential, commer- commercial, and industrial, supported by provision of community facilities, services, and amenities. Purpose of TMX, broad, broad range of uses adjacent to principal transportation corridors, accommodates automobiles-oriented uses, creates viable visually attractive environment. Use type sixteen, dwelling unit, multifamily residence is permitted in, permitted use in this zoning district. As noted in the staff report, these are the regulations that are applicable to the review of this project. Section fifty-one point three, specific regulations and standards. Concept site plan has been reviewed, maximum load coverage for prin- principal structure, minimum open space, private rear yard with six feet fencing, minimum usable open space and amenity open space. Staff fi- staff finding, design meets requirement. Schedule thirty-two dot one, development standards, base density, minimum landscaping, usable open space, minimum undeveloped open space, staff findings, design meets requirement, five TDRs are required. Chapter sixty-three, landscaping and buffer yard. Landscaping is, landscaping is required, uh, staff finding, design meets requirements, providing a variance to reduce a B buffer into a C buffer yard is approved by the Board of Appeals. Chapter sixty-four, off-street parking and loading. Staff finding, design meets requirement. Chapter seventy-one, resource protection, staff finding, no sensitive area located on site. In order to approve concept site plan, the planning commission shall make the findings that the proposed development is consistent with the comprehensive plan and applicable functional plans. May be served by adequate public facilities as required by section seventy point two point two. Will promote the health, safety, and welfare of general public. Adequately developed recreational and other community amenities are provided in accordance with the comprehensive plan and the comprehensive zoning ordinance. Is consistent with chapter sixty-two, design objectives. This concludes the staff report and is entered into the record of this public hearing as exhibit two. Question for me?
Does anybody have any questions to staff at this time? Thank you.
Good evening, service. How are you all today?
Good evening. My name's Wayne Hunt. Land surveyor with Little Silence's Rest, also a county residence. Two-nine-eight-zero-seven, Clare Circle in Mechanicsville.
Gene Burrows, Little Silence's Rest. Uh, address four-four-six-six-four, Cooperstown Lane, California, Maryland.
Okay, all right. So, we here are representing mid-Brian, which are Michael and Jennifer O'Brien, which are here in the audience with us today. This plan has been modified from what it was originally approved as about ten years ago for freedom therapy and apartments. It was approved by this commission, or this, uh, planning commission. It was also approved by the Board of Appeals. That plan also sought a variance from the B buffer yard to the C buffer yard. That plan had been brought all the way to final approvals. All it needed was five TDRs for that plan to actually go to permit and to construction. The O'Briens, the mid-Briens, O'Briens, um, did not want to move forward with that at that point in time, and they've let it sit, and they've decided that that is not what they want to do with this piece of property. After all, what they want to do is just use it as apartments, as a, um, means to generate income. So, they've gone through and they've changed the plan, and they've reduced the intensity of use to lower than what was originally approved by this commission almost ten years ago. We're looking now at a, um, site plan that just has six units. They're all two-bedroom units or one-bedroom and an office-type units. Um, and, uh, I guess let's go ahead and move into the, uh, presentation, please.
Wayne, when you say apartments, they're rentals?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just wondering if they're
Okay, yeah, absolutely.
Can use kind of condos, apartments, kind of interchangeable sometimes, but they're going to be rentals?
Yes.
Okay.
Did you ever?
Thought we gave it to you. You know, I think we need it. I can put it on a thumb drive real quick, but I thought we sent it to you and that you would have it ahead of time. So, can I have a minute or two to get my laptop?
Sure, we'll take a short recess.
I apologize. I didn't realize I needed to be prepared.
You're going to need it, sir. Okay, we're back in session. Thank you, Mr. Hunt.
Once again, I do apologize. I hope that wasn't too painful. It was fairly quick. Um, so just starting here, this is an overview, just an aerial photo of the neighborhood. Um, go ahead and the next slide. Showing where the site is located. Go ahead, next slide. Keep going. You can bring up the rest of the floors. It's just showing the roadways next to it. This is a blow-up of the site. Showing currently what's on there, which is a garage and a single-family home. There's also access to the neighboring, um, liquor store there, a shared access. I think you can go ahead and click on it. I think it'll start bringing them up. Old Village Road, Route Five, the radio station, and of course, the liquor store. Another item of note is the crossover just south of the liquor store. As you see, as we're moving forward with the site plan, you'll notice that we chose to access off of Old State Route Five, which is the lower classification roadway. But, uh, we figured it was just much easier to get in and out of for residential use, and also it's relatively close to the crossover at Route Five, so there is still good accessibility for the site. And of course, a residence next door, another blow-up. Go ahead. Next. And this shows overlaid with the proposed development on the site, just to see, it's roughly in the same location as the existing house, more or less. Those are signs that show the, uh, posting of the property was done. And this is a picture of the existing house on site. You can see it is somewhat, uh, becoming rundown. Um, the client definitely wants to replace what's out there. And, uh, looking forward to doing that as soon as they can at this point. Next. Next. All right, we can stop right here. This is the architectural profiles for this, and if I can, I do have a last-minute update to it. It is minor. If I can just pass these smaller ones out.
Thank you.
It mostly involves a, uh, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt.
I noticed the difference between what's on the, uh, computer monitor and, uh, what's shown here is basically just an eyebrow that runs across the back of the building in an attempt to break that wall up a little bit more. And also, the front door has been changed to a single door. Trying to do that, um, we're still not sure if code's going to allow it, but that's what we're going to try and do, is just a single door up front. If you'll notice this, and you look at it, it really, I mean, I'd be willing to bet you that Quality Built has houses this size that they built. This is not a huge house for an apartment building. And it very much looks like a residential home in nature when you look at it from the front. I think it blends well with the neighborhood. Um, I think some people, when they hear apartment building, they don't always picture something like this. They picture something much different. Okay, next slide. Um, these are just, once again, elevations. I think we can pass through most of them. Unless anybody has questions or wants to stop, you can just go through these. This is just a copy of the site plan. I think you, all of you have seen this and have copies of it, but I brought it along with me as part of this presentation to have, to discuss any questions that you may have. We can go through these until the last two, please, Sean Lee. This shows the proposed buffer yard with the fence. Very well shown or, you know, highlighted here. And the next slide shows where the required buffer yard per the ordinance should be. Just to show how much of it we're into with what we're planning on doing. So, if you'll back up to one of the site plans, uh, I believe my part of the presentation is over. And I'll start fielding questions.
I do have one question. When I was looking at the paper plans, the ingress and egress, it looked like, and the, right now, you said the address of the property was Three Notch Road. But I think I read in here that Old Village Road is supposed to be the address, or they want it changed to that, and so we'll, I think you did say, and I want to clarify, the egress and ingress will be And so we'll, I think you did say, and I want to clarify, the egress and ingress will be Village Road and you won't be coming in off of 235?
No, we will not. There is an existing entrance in the vicinity of the one that we're using or we're proposing.
I saw that on one of the details that you submitted. Thank you.
Do you intend to remove that egress and ingress from the Route 235 side?
No.
Route Five side, okay. So there will still be potential traffic coming from, say, the liquor store?
Yes.
To the front of the building?
Right. I don't know if we're allowed to remove that, to be honest with you.
But that...
There's a recorded access easement across the front there.
For DJs?
Yes.
On the front of our property.
Okay, so it's not by prescribed, it is a recorded easement?
There's a recorded easement, yes.
Your parking lot that you're gonna have, though, you won't have any access to that?
No, sir.
So strictly Old Village Road?
Yes, sir.
And just to note, the parking is all south. Parking won't be, I'll say, up against the residential side of these properties.
No, it will not.
Liquor store end of it, okay.
Wayne, I remember this case, you know, when it was gonna be a physical therapy or something. What was the Board of Appeals thing then? Was it the same thing from a B to a C?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it was the same?
It'll be the same process, yes.
Basically, the same location, I mean, is where you're...
Yes, we're gonna relocate it to where it was previously approved to be relocated.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Mr. Burris?
Do you have anything you're gonna add?
I do not.
I will always ask this question because you are adjacent, you have neighbors. None of the neighbors had any problems with the plan that we're moving, potentially moving forth with here?
I can't answer that question, but the O'Briens are here and they can talk about that.
And I think some of the neighbors are actually here also, so if there are, is there, if there's any problem, then we'll be able to hear them during public testimony this evening.
I'm not saying no, I'm just saying none I'm aware of.
And then I did see something in the report. My other question would be from the, an environmental review, that the, this is in the Wycomico watershed? Did I read that right? It was on...
That would make sense. Basically, the Wycomico and the Batuxent River watershed, Potomac, all of those pretty much follow straight down 235 from one side to the other of the county. So yes, it, the water's gonna go a long way from here. But some of it does actually flow across the street, too.
Okay, this was, it just said that, and you'll need a permit from MDE depending on your pollutant discharge elimination system, is that...
The National Pollutant Discharge, yes, the MPDES, and yes, I'm pretty sure, are we gonna need a pollution prevention plan for this?
The current plan, we are under an acre, which does not require that permit. If we do go over that permit, over an acre, that permit would be required. And I believe the comment was, then Tier Two would need to be addressed, which is another process that we have to go through.
Thank you for clarifying that.
I feel like I have to ask you some more, Mr. Hunt. It's just going too quickly here.
We got all dressed up and we came to meet.
You're, when you're gonna have to get a variance for your buffer, you're gonna have a, can you move back to that drawing?
Very last slide.
I'll go to it on my site plan. I see you're gonna have a dense buffer that's going to be between, otherwise you're gonna, you're gonna knock it up.
That's what's required by the ordinance. So the plantings will be as required by ordinance for that C buffer, including the fence.
Including the fence?
Yes.
What kind of fence are you gonna have?
I guess it has to be an opaque fence, six foot, if I recall correctly, for the requirements. The other part of the requirement, too, here, that we will probably talk about is the location of the fence itself. According to the template and the requirements, the fence is supposed to be up against the building. I think if you show the site plan, probably is one of the ones that will show it.
Give a couple more, Sean Lee. Next one?
That one right, that one's fine, too. But yeah, that one, that'll work. You'll notice at the top of the building, the line with the Xs is the fence. So we've had other instances where the Board of Appeals has actually asked us to move the fence up against the property line with the logic that in order to maintain the plantings, it would be better to have access to them direct instead of having to go around the fence and trying to fight your way into them. So we're gonna have that discussion, too. Matter of fact, I think the last time we did this, we had the fence up against the property line for that reason.
Doesn't that make more sense, anyway, to put the fence, I mean...
Yeah, kind of, but the ordinance is what it is.
Right, right.
And so we're just following it. That's what Sean Lee has had us do, is follow the ordinance. And it's either this board or the Board of Appeals that will change that fence location, or this commission, I'm sorry.
We just wanna make sure that it keeps, one, it keeps your folks on your side, but is pleasing enough, I'll say, site-wise for the neighbors.
Yeah.
Make sure that everything, you know.
Yes.
It is a nice-looking dwelling, you know, and like you said, there's houses that are bigger than that, on that road already. Some of them are, I'll say, older homes, more historic-type home, I'll say. Keeping with that character, you know, it's not too far out of the character of what's, what's within, I'll say, eyesight of what's around there. Does that go through there every now and then? Not the liquor store.
Not the liquor store, yeah.
Anybody else have any questions?
Just, the school bus will stop on Old Village Road if there's kids there.
That's correct.
'Cause I don't see anything in here that the school board has asked.
They received the plan. I think it commented that they did not submit any comments, if I remember right. It was no comments from the...
It's in the staff report, yeah.
It is.
They received notification, but they didn't send you any responses, so.
They got it, they just didn't respond. They had no objections, that's what they said.
And then, and then I read somewhere where there's gonna be twelve parking places for the residents and three guest parking places?
I believe that's correct. That's what's required per the ordinance.
Oh, for little ones required, for the big ones, it's not.
Imagine that.
Imagine that. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else have anything?
The existing gravel driveway, the horseshoe portion, since you do have some drainfields going over top of that, is that going to be removed?
It's pretty much already being abandoned in place, and I don't think we have any plans for re-establishing it, especially with the drainfields. Although, the previous plan had all of the drainfields under the parking lot, as these are deep systems and the Health Department would allow that to stay. But if they're going through the trouble of ripping it up to put in trenches, there's just no sense to put it back in when there's no use for it. So abandoning it in place at this point in time, I don't think they're going to physically, just not maintain it. Nature will take care of it.
Wayne, is the drainage system that was approved for the physical therapy the same as it was for the six apartments? Or did it have to be increased, or...
No, we had considerably more impervious surface with the previous plan. And as such, we had two much larger microbioretention facilities in between the access road and 235. This is just much less intense of a development than what was previously approved. And the one microbiome that we've got shown right now, and the grass swale that runs up against the parking lot is more than enough to take care of this development.
I was talking about the sewage.
Oh, sewage. It's not too far off. It's off.
Close to the same, or was it, does this have to be a little bigger?
It was big.
The other one?
Yeah.
Okay.
This one's not too far off. The apartment was most of the requirement for the other plan.
For the last time, okay.
Yes, sir. And it still is. I mean, we're still gonna be looking at five hundred linear feet of trench.
Okay. Anybody else? Anything else, Mr. Hunt? Mr. Burris?
No.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, if the applicant's gone, I'll go ahead and open it to public testimony. I have two, I'm sorry. I have two names that have already signed up, so I'll go ahead and go with them first. The first one is Karina Karshbaum. And I did get to swear you in, if I'm not mistaken. You were hiding behind Mr. Burris, but I think I got to see.
Karina Karshbaum, I reside at 27894 Old Village Road in Mechanicsville. So that would be just south of this property. Appreciate you presenting this information. My concern is that the entrance and exit to that parking area is on Old Village Road, near that cross area where you mentioned, which has a stop sign, which is predominantly disregarded by most motorists. So that is a concern of mine, that, again, increasing that traffic flow in that area and increasing that traffic flow pretty much at all hours of the time, as most people, many people come and go to residences throughout, you know, a greater period of the day than just a business. The other element that I'm concerned about is the access to recreation, which was noted by the staff. The area is located near the Three Notch Trail. There isn't space for pedestrian traffic in that area. And so my concern would be, where are these residents and how are they accessing the local resources like the Three Notch Trail? How would they safely navigate that road, having crossed that road to visit my neighbors? It can be treacherous. So that would be an element. When you, Ms. Lee, spoke about the schools and bus pickup, that just like made me clutch because I thought, oh, my goodness, like, that's just another element that I was concerned about. Thank you for hearing my comments.
Hold on a sec, hold on a sec, ma'am. Does anybody have any questions? We appreciate you coming.
Thanks.
Next on my list was Erin Sears. Good evening, ma'am. Can I get your name and address?
My name is Erin Sears. Address is 27898 Old Village Road. Thank you to the County Planning Commission for allowing the public to discuss this particular plan. The last time, I can't believe I'm saying this, I remember Mrs. Pilkerjin said, "You're not counting until you're thirty years here." And I can't believe I'm like twenty-five at this point. But it's that institutional memory in this area. And the last development project was the Cedar, Cedar Point subdivision to the south of Three Notch Road. Thirty houses, thirty wells. And while I know that six new residences are not going to affect wells, when those, when those houses were put in to the south of Three Notch Road, our well dried up immediately, which cost us a pretty penny to put in a deep well. Can the developers please address how this, you know, the environment and what they're going to do will affect, you know, the water table within the environment? Because the last time that the commission allowed the subdivision to take place, one of the county officials said, "Well, thank you very much for your opinion, but it's going to go ahead." So at the moment, I appreciate that you guys are allowing us at the beginning of this process. And I appreciate that Mike and Jennifer want to create a multifamily system in this area. We need it. We have single, single-home family units. But from an, you know, from a historical point of view, the water table went dry when you guys decided to put development in that area. So I would like very much to be included in that process.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hold on, does anybody have any questions? I'm gonna let the applicant, what strata are you going to? I know that now the Health Department requires you to go to the, you know, I don't know what water table y'all were at, what strata you were in.
We're in the Pennsylvania.
But that, I know they've, I know they're asking for deeper wells now.
I'm not sure if we're going to the Matapanai or not for this one. I just, I just don't know. I can't answer that question.
Well, the Health Department's gonna tell you anyway, I mean...
Yeah, they are. They're gonna tell us what we're gonna do regardless.
Okay.
And we have to let the taps go in the Matapanai. I don't know if we're gonna go to either one of those with this one.
Okay. They will be required by the state, by the, by the Health Department as to what they'll have. And they'll, I'm not speaking for the Health Department, I don't work there, but I know that they have to review everything in the area to see what's going on. And then they, they tell the applicant, themselves, what they have to do or how deep they have to go.
So there will be another meeting about that as well?
Public meeting?
Yes.
No.
Okay. Thank you.
But what you can do is you can contact the Health Department and ask them about this project. And so you can specifically find out what they're gonna require them to do, just so you know where yours is and how deep this will be or won't be.
Okay, thank you so much.
Sure.
Thank you.
Sorry, I don't have that answer, but it's typically just not part of the process.
Like I say, they're...
They don't tell us, no. But we're in charge of where it goes on the surface. How deep it goes is between the Health Department and the well drilling.
Okay. Was there anybody else? Okay, seeing none, I'll go ahead and close it, public testimony. You've had a chance to answer the applicant, I mean, the people from the audience on their questions this evening.
Requirement for amenity space. I mean, we've provided a space in front of the building for passive recreation. Maybe a picnic table or something like that, but either which way, it's lawn space, it's green space, it's flat open space for them to enjoy, to meet the requirement for open space. As far as access to other county or amenities in the area, I'm just not sure how to address that. And that's typically not required by ordinance, if I recall. So it's kind of difficult to quantify what would be adequate for development to access the amenities in the county beyond what everybody else has to go through. I wanna use the Three Notch Trail. I put my bike on the back of a car and I drive to a parking lot. And I'm not sure if there's anything else we can do to facilitate access at this point. Other than provide what's required as far as the size access for the development.
Well, I mean, the trail is there for all to use. And it's like you say, if you, if you want, unless you live right beside it or close enough to do a short walk, you're gonna have to do a little traveling, you're gonna have to either drive your car to a lot and get on it or drive your car and take your bike off and use it, as you said. But it's nice to have it near you, you know, in case you do.
Comment question. I believe from what I've read, I'm relatively new at this, but that the county prefers that we don't have access a lot of different access points, or ingress egress points off the major highways, off of like 235 or whatever. But given the traffic problems, it sounds like that exist on Old Village Road, is that something that, I don't mean, I know you've had these plans out there, I guess, but is that something, given the situation, that could be a compromise and have access via 235? Since there is an existing, you know, ingress egress sort of, I mean, it's not being maintained, but is that at all a feasibility, or is that not part of this?
Do you wanna answer, or you want me to answer?
We did the adequate public facilities report through the Department of Public Works. And through that analysis, the roads in the area operate under a level of service A or B, which is well within what's required. So we thought coming off of the minor, the minor road was a better option here.
And the road ordinance typically directs us towards the lower-classification road for entrance.
I've read that, yeah.
Plus, to come out on 235, you got two businesses on either end. And you have enough people coming in and out on that and have an apartment building right in, I call it apartment, an apartment house in the middle between two commercial things. It makes sense to come out on the, on the road in the back. And I'm sure you heard that from, from staff and from the county on how to, how to do that. Plus, when you get, come off the back road, there's several entrances that you can get on to 235 that you have access to. So it's not like you wouldn't have just that one to get on 235.
Yes, you could go north and cut... Yes, you could go north and cut across on a floor corner road and come out there. There's a number of options.
Number of options, yeah.
But if we use the main entrance on 235, the only way to go northbound on 235 would be a U-turn.
Yeah. That's not good.
Okay. Anybody else have anything? I think we've gone through it well. I think it's a well-thought-out plan. Neighbors' questions, I believe, were answered, and then we gave them some direction on how they could find out water table questions and things like that with the Health Department, so... Is there any other discussion? There is no discussion, would somebody like to make a motion? Boy, look at me when I jump right up and make my... I just was looking at you. I wanted to see... I know you were. I just wanted to see how you were, so... You got it?
Sure. In the matter of the concept site plan, CSP 24-0345, the Cottage Apartments, having accepted the staff report and having made a finding that objectives of Section 60.6 of the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance have been met, we move to, I move to the concept site plan be approved with the following conditions. A, any road improvement required by the state and county must be concurrent with the issuance of certificate of occupancy, and that, two, that you obtain a variance from the Board of Appeals for a reduction of B-type buffer yard to C-type buffer yard on the west side of the property adjacent to Parcel 178, Lot 1.
Second.
Okay, and I have a second, Ms. Delahay.
Quick discussion, Howard. Do we need to include the five TDRs as a condition, or is that just gonna be what they have to do for this density?
No, well, that's part of what will come between deep...
Okay, I didn't know if it would need it to be a...
Would you suggest that we need that? Mr. Hauser?
Inclusion can't hurt, but it's not necessary. If you don't put the condition in, staff review at the major site plan's still gonna require it. If they don't have the five TDRs, unless there's a change in law, they're not getting it. Can include it, does no harm, it's not required.
Okay. I won't ask for a friendly amendment, then, if it's not required. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hauser. Okay, we'll go ahead and vote, then. Any other discussion on the motion? Okay. Ms. Delahay? We're gonna go ahead and vote.
Oh.
You're first up, Mike. Ms. Philias?
Aye.
Mr. Lockman?
Aye.
Mr. Cousineau?
Aye.
Van Kirk?
Aye.
St. Clair?
Aye.
Also vote aye. Make sure you take care of your neighbors.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. Very much.
And Ms. Philias, I'll warn you that next hearing, you're first.
It's fine.
Is there any other business this evening? If there's no other business, then I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
There you go, I hear from you now. Second. Second, see? Come awake, they're ready to go. All in favor of the...
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. We'll see you all soon. Thank you.